And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Anita.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome everyone to our first meeting of 2023. And we start with open forum and want to start with recognizing Paul McMillan, who is retiring from the ZBA after 12 years of being on the ZBA. He was appointed in April of 2010 and he served, as I said, on the ZBA for about almost 12 years now. As an appointee, he, and I know as a longtime Graniteville boy, he diligently and faithfully has represented the interests of Graniteville on the ZBA. He also, just for folks to know a little bit about Paul, he is a decorated Vietnam veteran. He is a longstanding member and a former board member of the 4H Club. He's a trustee of the Westford Academy and he was a founding and longtime member of the Executive Board of the Westford Academy Athletic Hall of Fame. We have Principal Jim Antonelli has emailed us with the following accolade. Paul McMillan has been a significant contributor to both the Westford Academy trustees and to the Executive Board of Westford Academy Athletic Hall of Fame. His contributions to both organizations are many. Paul is a deep love for the town of Westford and our entire community has benefited from his commitment and dedication. You can certainly echo Principal Antonelli's words. Paul has indeed served our town faithfully and diligently over the years. And we thank him for his service and we wish him well in the next phase and the next stage of his life as he moves on from the ZBA. So Paul, thank you very, very much for all of your hard work and your dedication to our town. It is greatly appreciated. So, thank you. And I know you're out there, Paul. Do you wish to say anything? Do you want to say anything? And I guess Eric, if you can promote him to a panelist. Thank you.
I guess I'm all set now.
You are. We can hear you, Paul.
Well, thank you very honor, appreciation. I appreciate it myself. It was a pleasure working with a fine group of guys on the board. And I want to compliment the staff at the Town Hall for all their assistance and everything they provided for us to make a more fluid operation with the ZBA. Thank you very much and we'll still be around.
Great. Good luck, Paul.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
The next item for open forum is I have an announcement to make. The town was awarded a municipal vulnerability preparedness grant, which allows us to conduct a tree and invasive species inventory and to come up with a management plan with a related tree planting plan. As part of this process, the, we will have, or sponsored by the land use and the planning board, we are going, there will be a second public forum, which is going to be held on January 19th to review the plan and to seek additional public input on the invasive tree and invasive species inventory and management plan. So it is going to be held, as I said, Thursday, January 19th, 7 to 9 p.m. via Zoom. If you go to the town website, you can find the flyer there. And if you are interested in attending, you can sign up there. And if you have any questions, you can contact Jeff Morissette, our Director of Land Use Management, and he will be happy to answer any of the questions that you have. And then, before, I know, I know that we have a resident who does want to speak at a public forum. But before I get to him, anybody else from the board have anything for public forum or for open forum? John?
Yeah, I don't want to get in front of Scott, but I attended the permanent town building committee meeting last night. And when they got to talking about, you know, we approved or accepted the grant for the library last meeting. There was a little bit of uncertainty as what the process going forward was. And I told them that something was going to be coming out on that. And we received that, of course, this morning, that changed a few things. I would, I think that we as a select board need to take a look at the whole process and have permanent town building committee, perhaps the library, kind of update this board on where we are and what's coming down the pike as far as schedule, milestones and things like that, and things that we have to meet. So I'd like to propose doing that. I know we can't discuss it here. I just wanted to go on record saying I think we need to do that.
Okay, you're on record, but as you said, you know, for open forum and we can consider this at a later date. And we will leave it at that for now. Mark Olala is out there and he has requested to speak at open forum. So Eric, if you could promote him to a panelist, thank you.
Am I live?
You are live.
Great, excuse me. Well, Happy New Year to you all. My name is Mark Olalar. I have lived at 105 Concord Road for 12 years and have served on agricultural commission for the past six, four of the last years as Chair. I come before you tonight to celebrate the fact that interest in and engagement with agriculture in town has been steadily growing over the past 10 years. The Agricultural Commission, as you may know, has been primarily focused on supporting the multiple organizations that operate on the day field site on Graniteville Road. This location, you may also know, is governed by the Conservation Commission. And through a memorandum of understanding, the Agricultural Commission oversees the day-to-day operations of a full-time farmer, the community garden, a community apiary, and most recently, a young women's nonprofit called Flowers to Empower that grows cut flowers. We've also assisted several Boy and Girl Scout troops on various projects at the site. This past spring, the Westward Agricultural Commission reached out to Mr. Abraham Masaladin, who owns Westward Gateway LLC at 6668 Boston Road. It's also more commonly known as Drew Gardens. Our letter to Mr. Masaladin and subsequent phone conversation was meant to discuss ways we could expand agricultural activities on his property. Our exchange with Mr. Masaladin was very positive and we hope to continue discussing with him ways to have his property firmly engaged in agriculture. Our thinking was twofold. Our commission has a decades worth of success managing multiple stakeholders at the Graniteville Road site. The Drew Gardens site is similar inside to the Day Field site and its land is governed by an APR, an agricultural preservation restriction. Therefore, it seemed a perfect location for a multipurpose agricultural venue. Furthermore, it appeared and still appears that Mr. Masaladin could use our help in living up to his obligation under the APR to ensure the land is not left fallow. Toward that end, our commission is pursuing the following course of action. Firstly, we have already begun outreach to potential agricultural enthusiasts, farmers, gardeners, and small specialty agricultural growers of items like cut flowers to get their support in crafting a land use plan for that site. Our goal is to have a land use plan in place by the end of 2023 so it can be successfully implemented in the 2024 growing season. Secondly, we are reaching out to large, larger farm and land conservation organizations like the Massachusetts Conservation Coalition to get their help and expertise to help avoid redundancies and preempt pitfalls that are common with these multi-party structures. Lastly, we are coming to you, our very own Board of Select People, to first ask you formally to place an article on the warrant for the 2023 annual town meeting that asks our townspeople to approve of our efforts. We feel this is necessary to ensure that the APR that Westward's townspeople paid for is properly executed by Mr. Masaladin and enforced by the Select Board. I have emailed each of you a copy of our warrant article formally approved by our commission. We will submit the text of the article by tomorrow, tomorrow's deadline of 10 a.m., January 11th, 2023. I thank you kindly for your time and welcome further discussions with each of you on this matter at the time and venue that is more appropriate. So thank you again. And good night.
Thank you, Mark. John?
Is Mark open for questions or just a comment?
Not, I mean, just maybe a comment, but again, you know, it's open forum, so it's not on our agenda, but.
Well, yeah, what he has in mind is farming. And he had started, if they agreed to do some farming there, something similar to what they laid out before, and it doesn't involve, it doesn't involve any other non-agricultural activity, I think they could just go ahead and do it. I don't know that they require annual town meeting approval for something like that. The agricultural restriction, you know, speaks for itself. You know, we wouldn't wait for them to do some farming on there. And any farming would be welcome, I would think, unless it's marijuana, no. But, you know, I mean, that's, that's, so I'm not too sure that's needed. I just wanted to make a comment.
Well, they certainly, you know, the Agricultural Commission certainly has the right to submit its more, you know, request for a warrant article by tomorrow morning at 11:00 and, and, you know, we put it on the warrant, we can talk about it then.
Okay.
All right. Okay. I think that is it for open forum tonight. So moving along to our 7:05 p.m. item, which is to consider recommendations from the opioid spending task force regarding spending of the National Opioid Settlement Payment received in the amount of $129,997.88 in preparation for the annual town meeting warrant article. And Nicole Lavelette, who is our Community Wellness Coordinator, is here to talk to us about that. So Nicole?
Hello.
Hello, Nicole.
I'm going to share just a little bit about our preparation for the opioid settlement funds. Jody put together a task force the end of last year. We've since met several times and have come up with ideas on how to best use the funds. We will receive between now and 2038, $618,151.84. As of last week, we have already received $129,978.88. Some of the items the task force has decided upon are around Narcan lock boxes for police and fire department and local establishments to fund the William James referral service for the calendar year 2024. The Nishoba Technical High School has come up with curriculum they feel will meet the needs of their students around SEL, one being Trails, one being the Michigan Model Curriculum. Also to have a speaker come and speak to the students and also open it up to all Westward families. So the rest of the expenditure items are on the memo that was in the packet. Does anyone have questions?
I was going to say questions. Anita?
Yeah, thanks Nicole. And I know Ray was working on, with you on this and like many others. And I had a question about the list of expenditures for that first one for the Narcan lock boxes. So there's an estimated amount of $15,000, but then it also says that the Health Department is going to estimate, there's going to be an estimated cost. And I was just trying to figure out how, like, you mean that, like, where does that play into the 15,000?
So that, that's an error on my part. So the estimated cost was a placeholder. I apologize. That piece should have been taken out. The Health Department did establish a cost and that is the 15,000.
Thanks.
Jody?
Yes, so thank you. I just wanted to explain that the mechanics of this are that we do need to take it to town meeting. We will, pending what the board decides, have an article that states the purposes that we can spend it on. And then if the town meeting approves, it would go in that article. So it would not expire at the end of the fiscal year. If we didn't do it that way, then if we just did it within a fiscal year, then the funds would revert into the general fund at the end. So we wanted to try this mechanism to keep it separate. So that's why you're getting the whole amount, but it's not completely specific. But you're getting the ideas of what we propose to spend it on if town meeting approves.
That makes sense. Certainly makes sense if we, you know, that these funds be dedicated for the purposes that, that we want them to and that they not end up going back into the general fund. Other questions or comments? So Jody or Nicole, what, what, what are you looking for from the board for tonight? Anything? Jody?
Yeah, I think she did give you a motion, but basically that if you support what the task force is recommending and it will go to town meeting and you can discuss it when you review the warrant article. But are you in agreement with where we're going with this? And if you're not, tell us now so we can regroup.
Okay. So is there a motion to support the recommendations presented to us tonight?
So moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor? Anita?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye. Nicole and Ray and to everybody on that committee, thank you very much for all your hard work on this. And I guess Nicole, don't go away. Because our 7:15 p.m. item is to consider forming a Community Behavioral Health Committee to focus on mental health services and access suicide and substance and substance use disorder prevention and interventions. So Nicole, do you want to update on, update us on this? I know it was before us, before the holidays.
Yes, thank you. So we convened and discussed the questions that the board had brought up regarding the charge and who the committee would report to. So we discussed eliminating some of the bullets on the previous memo and to focus on three key items around reviewing mental and behavioral health data that the Health Department and the Community Wellness Department will provide to the committee to kind of come up with what would be best practice, ideas, resources, recommended programs, tools that can be prevention and interventions. And then as round budgetary estimates and suggested timelines for the implementation. And we would advise the Select Board, Board of Health and other town departments around these recommendations. And then also around advocacy for substance use disorder, mental health services to promote prevention, treatment, recovery for all diverse populations. So we would have a focus on those three key items and that the committee would report to the Select Board.
Okay, questions or comments? John?
And then one item, you say you are going to include specific items with budgetary estimates. So you're creating budget items from this, is that correct? You're going to need some money?
Possibly.
You know, what do you do about this now? How do you handle? Or do you just do nothing in these areas right now?
So, so I can speak to what I do as the role of a Community Wellness Coordinator. So around mental health, it's been a real focus on resources and information for the community through various avenues. So for, for my role, it's education through the community, excuse me, the town manager newsletter or other avenues as far as meeting with different departments or individuals. I have residents who call me in regards to questions around mental health. I haven't yet had questions around substance use disorder, so it's really been a focus around mental health. And there's some other things that are coming within, you know, the year 2023. And the Health Department, from my experience, has education through materials and they do have a part-time person, she's a full-time person, but a part-time person for Westford, the Regional Community Wellness Coordinator, who does have some programming within Westford as well.
Anita?
Yeah, thanks for this revised list, Nicole and Ray. Because I just feel like there were a lot of things that I had questions about in the last proposal. And I think making this sort of an advisory committee where you're able to let us know what the recommendation should be or a different program or something makes a lot of sense that it, and that goes to the Select Board and Board of Health. I wonder if there's a way to tie this to the opioid settlement funds, especially if you're making recommendations and there might be funds needed for the different programming. And if it's related to substance use or abuse, then maybe that's something we can tie back to those funds. The question I had was around the composition of the committee because it feels like a very full committee. And whether or not we need the four citizens at large, maybe it's just two, which I know it's just, it's not a huge number that I would be cutting down, but it looks like a very full, full committee that we're proposing. That's my only comment question.
I guess, you know, I thought it was a full committee as well, Anita, but I really liked the fact that there were four citizens, you know, participating and that it, you know, it does bring in our residents who are actually, you know, sort of, you know, living this and having experiences and talking with other people. So I'm not sure, I'm open to talking about whether there are some other places we might, you know, kind of roll back on this committee, but I do like having four citizens at large on it for that reason. And again, we can start with a full committee like this and, you know, as we have in the past, if it turns out that there are problems, we can always, you know, we can always decrease the membership as well. So Scott?
Yeah, I agree. I think that you want to, you want to, you want a committee that represents the community. So I think more members are better than fewer and that a lot of folks in town who either got personal experience with this area, professional experience, their doctors, nurses, healthcare providers. So I think we'll have no problem getting four individuals who are committed to doing this. So I, yeah, you're, you're right. If it doesn't happen, we can cut it back later, but I'd rather have it be more inclusive than not to start with.
And then to Anita's point about, and, and I guess I don't know that we need an answer tonight, but I think Anita raises a really good point about can we tie this back into the opioid funding? And, you know, use some of those, some of those funds that are still unallocated for issues that may come out of this committee. So I think that's something we should keep in mind. And particularly because we're going to get funding for like 10 years. So it could be a source of funding for some of, you know, for whatever recommendations come forward from the committee and, you know, whatever programs we might want to implement. Jody?
Yes, I would suggest that maybe we add that to the list that will be going to the warrant article. So that is specified.
Okay, great. Okay, so any other comments? Ray, I see that you have your hand up. Did you want to say something?
That would be great. I just, I wanted to add, sorry, I wasn't on. I just wanted to add to Anita's point that we absolutely want to add opioid discussion at these meetings. And also you had mentioned a few minutes ago about funding the budgetary portion. So at the Health Department, we work really close with Nicole and Brittany Nash, our regional, to apply for grants whenever possible. So we do actually have quite a few mental health grants that we run now with programming. I know there's a woman listed, I believe, under the question right now who's looking for mental health events. And so I just wanted to mention to that resident that they could certainly sign up, look not only on the Community Wellness webpage, but the Health Department webpage, and they can sign up for the Westford news flashes. And we do have several mental health events we've run recently and continue to do so.
Great. Thank you, Ray. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. So if there are no other questions or comments, and I don't see any, I think at this point, are we ready to make a motion to form a Community Behavioral Health Committee as recommended by our Health Director Ray Dick and our Community Wellness Coordinator Nicole Lavelette? Anita?
Sorry, just a logistical question. So for the people who are going to be serving on this committee, are they appointed by the Select Board? So are people are going to be applying for the citizen activity forms to be those, filling those seats? Okay.
Yes. Yes to both. I think John moves, I think you made the motion, John, right?
Yes.
And, okay, all right. So all those in favor, Anita?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Aye. Ray and Nicole, thank you for all your work on this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we're at our old and new business. And the first thing on old and new business is an update from David Hettison, who is seeking support for a community preservation funding application for an additional $1 million for 35 Town Farm Senior Housing Project. Hi, David.
Hi, good evening, everyone. David Hettison from Choice and Chelmsford Housing. Thank you so much for allowing me to come this evening and speak with you. So I'll, and I'll tell you about the exciting things first. Right before the holidays, we submitted our information to the Mass Department of Housing and Community Development regarding Town Farm. What that means is in the next few weeks, hopefully before Jody departs, she'll be receiving a letter that says, surprise, Choice and SCG has submitted a project eligibility request for Town Farm Road, which means the green light will be happening and will be, we'll be in that 30-day process where the town can provide some, you know, general input. And then within three months, we'll be in front of the zoning board to begin the process, which is super exciting. What was not so exciting was as we were preparing the application to DHCD and asking for updated pricing from our 2021 numbers, with inflation in the market being what it is, the pricing came back at almost $2 million more than when that was priced, you know, over a year and a half ago. We were able to buffer that increase by contributions from Choice, increasing the mortgage slightly, making some adjustments internally and looking to CPC for the other 50%. And what I will say is, as I've always said, whenever requested funds was, we will ask you, the option will always be to put this million dollars in last. We will not draw down any funds until we're fully funded. And that would mean that the first dollar may not be pulled down until about 2025. So the schedule as it is right now, we'd be going to the ZBA, hopefully starting sometime in March, April. We'll be submitting our first application to DHCD, which is the, it's an annual funding round, which will be sometime October of 2023. Usually you go in once and they say, maybe you can come in, but usually not award in the first round. We go back October of 2024 and that's our goal to get funded in that round. We would close early 2025 and our funding and occupancy would happen at the end of 2025. That's the goal that we're operating under right now. I will say, with the change of the administration that's occurring right now, we are going to see a major, hopefully going to see a major increase in the resources for affordable housing. With everything that's happened with MBT communities and the increased awareness and I want to say the words from the new governor and the tenant governor. I want to say the words from the new governor and the tenant governor, we have to see an increase in affordable housing production. And now it's my last comment I'll make on this and I can answer questions. On this last round that was October, there were a hundred and eleven applications that went in and these are projects that weren't only the first time, these are projects that are ready to be dug into the ground. Only forty five were allowed to apply out of the hundred and eleven. So forty five have gone in for funding, but not all forty five will be funded. It's horrible. So it's not for us, for our lack, not our lack of trying, but each time we're able to present an application that is very strong and that has really strong community support, it helps us shine even stronger. So we could go in with the potential gap and say, we will be asking for funds from CPC. Or we could say, we've asked for additional funds and we've been awarded those additional funds and therefore we are more viable to go forward and please take us. So that's where we're at right now. You can't see my face, but I just, I'm thanking you with my smile.
Thank you, David. Questions or comments from the board? Scott?
Yeah, I think there are two things. Briefly, you know, I mean, we all have seen what's happened to the cost of every project that we've undertaken, being the most recent one that we've funded and that's just the nature of of the market right now with destruction spending, so I think it's unfortunate, but not unexpected. And secondly, you know, even so with thirty five units of housing here, it's still, I think, a pretty good subsidy in terms of per unit to get it online, plus the food pantry, everything else, saving the building, I mean, the the boxes that we check here besides housing are pretty significant, so I'd I'd be inclined to support the application.
Other comments? Okay, I don't see any. Is there a motion to support the application?
So moved.
All those in favor, Scott?
Aye.
John? Anita?
Aye.
Aye. David, go forth.
Thank you so much, all of you. Thank you, Jody. Thanks so much. Have a good evening.
Have a good evening. Okay, our next item under old and new business is a discussion of holding future select board meetings in person, hybrid or virtually in light of an act relative to extending certain state of emergency accommodations, which is set to expire on March thirty first, twenty twenty three. So for the public, just so, what that means is that on March thirty first, twenty twenty three, right now, set to expire is the authority that the state has given us to conduct all of our meetings virtually. At this point in time, I do not believe, we do not know what the state is going to do. We don't know if they're going to extend it beyond March thirty first or not. I think that there is a push across the state to continue to allow cities and towns to hold virtual meetings. I think at least we here in Westford have found that having virtual meetings increases participation, allows people to participate and join our meetings. It also is quite honestly, more convenient for some of our town staff who are able to participate remotely rather than having to, you know, work all day and then stay around in town until, you know, they come up at a meeting. So I think that there continues to be a need for that, but at the same time, at least some of us as board members are feeling that we are missing the personal interaction that really you can only get when you are in person with your fellow board or committee members as opposed to Zoom. So we although we do not know what is going to happen in March, we want to start planning for the eventuality of either, you know, we have to go back in person for everybody full time, or we can operate hybrid if we would, if we desire, or if we want to just continue virtually. So that's, that's the background for this. We have in our packets a memo from Eric and from Mike Wells, but I know that that memo is from July of twenty twenty one. And I guess, you know, my, my first question really is, have things changed and, you know, should that memo really be updated and, you know, when we, when that memo was written, the town really really weren't sure of how to do hybrid. I certainly know that the school committee has been operating on a hybrid platform now for, I think probably about a year now. You know, we, we didn't have owls at the time that memo was written and we have owls now, so you know, my question is, given those changes, given that the school committee has already been doing that, you know, how does that impact us and, and can we, can we think about and really go forward in conducting our meetings hybrid? If that isn't ultimately, if we're permitted to do that. In that way, I think it it allows and it permits people to continue to have access to our meetings without actually having to come and attend, and it also allows our town staff to participate remotely if they would like, and yet it allows us to be together if we so desire, as well as anybody who wants to come to our meetings and attend our meetings, so. So I think that's where we're coming from and I think that's at least from my perspective, that's the kind of information I'm looking for from our town staff. So, you know, Eric or, I don't, Jody?
Yeah, I think I'd like Eric to speak to this, but I, I know he did update that memo. I just think the date did not get changed, so. If, even if you read it, some of the things happened after, so I think he used a prior memo. Okay, anyway, I'd like to defer to him to speak to this. Thank you.
Okay, Eric, the floor is yours.
So if, if we're talking about just the select board, just to at least get things started, we certainly could do hybrid meetings. We've done them in the past. I think there's some logistical things we'll have to discuss to figure out who's going to flag or handle questions as they come in and whatnot, but I certainly think it can be done. Mike spoke to Chris Sanders and it sounds like he's doing a lot of that stuff himself. Certainly I can provide that function for the select board meetings. I think Mike's concern was if we open it up to other boarding committees, certainly having somebody there trained who can run the hybrid meeting forum to comply with open meeting law, that was the concern.
Okay. Thank you. And I'm sorry, I apologize. Obviously the date just wasn't updated. Okay, so I didn't know that, so appreciate that. Questions or comments from, from the board? Scott?
Yeah, I'm, I guess with you in terms of, I think there's value of being you know, together as a team, you can, you know, there are very simple things like, like making motions of seconds, you don't have a few people doing it, but just that you can, you can have that sort of body language and I think even, you know, some of our presentations work better if you can ask questions directly. So I, I think that there's a good reason to go back to in person, but yeah, we should certainly accommodate those who prefer to be home in the evenings for whatever reason, you know, children with school age or or health and certain town staff that live out of town, so if you know, if it's a hybrid trial board, I would say that would be the way to go.
Anita and then John?
Yeah, I would also support a hybrid option if we were able to pull it together and I have a question about the so I remember back when in the ARPA requests, we funded a part time person to help with the virtual meetings for the different boards and committees. And it was for like fiscal year twenty two and I'm just wondering, and it was for seventy five hundred dollars. And I'm just wondering how that's going? Is that something that's going to need to be continued that could be absorbed? Or what people's thoughts are on that?
Jody, would you like to answer that?
Yes, so we weren't able to find a person to just support those meetings, but what we did is we we offered additional pay to people that wanted to support those that already were employees. And I think it worked pretty well, but I, you know, I, I do think it's something we have to look at because even technology that department has had the brunt of support, so that means they work all day and then they're running meetings all evenings. So it is something we're going to have to figure out how it works, you know, better without expecting staff to take on that additional burden. You know, it can be that some boards that are interested can be trained and, you know, we can work on that aspect too. But it's not, it's complicated. That's, I think, what we're trying to say. Somebody needs to really run the meeting that is tech savvy and we need the equipment.
John, you have your hand up?
Yes, I support the hybrid meeting. I certainly support in person. If we can't swing the hybrid, I still like to go in person and then get the hybrid as soon as we can. I wouldn't want to just stop it because we can't do it, but I think the objective should be go hybrid.
Scott?
Just, just a thought. It is just a thought that it just popped in my head right now, so I bet you can say it, but I mean, is it worth talking to Westford Cat about you know, partnering on this because they've got somebody typically recording these meetings for us, they're tech savvy. You know, is there a way we could use that, you know, our funding and their expertise to make this work for both of us?
Certainly, I, I think of, of, you know, a valid proposed, you know, suggestion to, to follow up on. Jody?
Eric and Mike did speak with W Cat about that. Eric, do you want to answer that question?
Sure. So they did have some interest. We were just trying to figure out the logistics of who would do what. I think we kind of thought it was redundant for the select board. If I'm already there running the meeting, there would be kind of weird to have them running a piece too. But certainly it's something they're willing to explore. Sarah Fletcher and Nick met with us and they're happy to continue that discussion if we want to explore that further.
Great. So I think Eric, you know, what you're hearing is that, you know, the board is, is in favor of hybrid meetings and moving towards a hybrid format. You know, basically, you know, definitely after March thirty first, but, and that's, you know, that's probably, you're going to need some lead time for you and Mike and if Cat's involved and any other one, any other people to sort of, to figure out the logistics and how this is all going to work. But I think what you're hearing, what you're hearing from the board is that that is our preference and so I think, you know, that we'd like to direct you and Mike and to move forward with coordinating hybrid meetings for the future.
Not a problem. We're happy to do it. I'll follow up with Mike tomorrow and we'll start getting planning.
Great, thank you very much. Okay. So we're at our seven fifty PM item, which is annual town meeting and I just want to remind everybody that annual town meeting is Saturday, March twenty fifth at ten AM. And it's at the Westford Academy Gymnasium. And as we start posting documents related to town meeting, you'll be able to access them on the town website. At the, there'll be a link to two thousand and twenty three annual town meeting and you'll be able to find documents there, so. But for tonight, we have a request to vote intention to lay out Burn Place as a town way and to then to refer the matter to the planning board for a non-binding recommendation. So Steve Condon, do you just want to remind us of what we're doing here?
Sure, thank you very much. So before you, tonight is a request for you to vote your intention to lay out Burn Place as a town way. This will initiate a series of steps that will ultimately, that are ultimately important for the street acceptance process. So following a vote of approval tonight, this would go before the planning board for their recommendation and then back to the select board for a public hearing. And ultimately placement of an article on annual town meeting for approval of Burn Place as a town road. The residents petitioned the town back in September of two thousand and twenty one. This was supported by the capital planning committee. Funding was approved by annual town meeting. Construction of, construction and improvements on Burn Place took place over the course of the summer and the engineering department has had the opportunity to inspect the road and ultimately recommends its acceptance as a public way.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? I don't see any, so is there a motion to vote the intention to lay out Burn Place? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, John? Scott?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you. So we will do that and we will refer it to the planning board.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Steve. Then, and now we have we are at our eight PM item, which is a continuation of ARPA funding request to determine allocations. So let me first tell everybody who has emailed the select board over the last seven to ten days about hiring or funding the position of a sustainability coordinator. We have gotten all of your emails. We have read all of your emails, okay, and we are fully aware of where you all stand on, on that issue and we appreciate you all taking the time to email us and letting us know your thoughts. That being said, just so everybody knows, the only thing tonight that we are discussing is Jody's recommendation that we fund the public safety radio upgrade project, which was approved in June in the amount of one million forty thousand dollars through ARPA funding so that we can then free up about a hundred we can free up a hundred and twenty six thousand, eight hundred and eighty eight dollars a year for ten years in the town's operating budget. And we can then determine how we're going to use that funding, understanding that all of you folks who have emailed us would like at least a portion of that funding to be used to hire a full-time sustainability coordinator. We will talk about that part of it at a future meeting. But tonight, all we're talking about is whether we want, whether we agree to basically fund that capital request with ARPA funds. With that, Jody, let me turn it over to you, okay?
Yes, thank you. I really don't have a lot to say. You summarized it, but this is a project that I have suggested to you at several meetings that if, you know, you have ARPA funds and Dan is on, he can tell you the exact amount you have, but this is something the town needs to do and if you fund it, then it will free up operating funds for the next ten years, so that's a choice you can make.
So Dan, can you tell us what, what our current ARPA fund balance is? And if we decide to fund the capital expenditure with ARPA funds, what will be then left with our, for, in our ARPA funds?
Sure. So our current balance is two million nine hundred sixty six thousand and eighty four dollars. So if we do approve the a million forty thousand, the balance would be a million nine hundred twenty six thousand eighty four dollars.
Okay. Scott?
I apologize for the question. I just, I'm just curious. It doesn't need to be answered, but you know, either Jody or Dan, you know, how much money will we save in interest by by basically paying for this now, we're not, we're not bonding ballpark?
Scott, if you give me one minute, I can get you an answer.
Why did I know you would know that, Dan, or you would be able to answer that question?
I should have asked earlier today, didn't, but just, you know, thinking through, you know, informing the electorate. It'd be good to say what we're actually saving on doing this.
Well, Dan is getting that number or figure for us. Anybody else from the board have any questions? John?
I just got a comment. Yeah, I understand we'll have a million nine left. We've got a couple outliers out there. There are some things in the schedule now that cost about a half a million dollars a piece. And this is kind of, we're supposed to obligate this by what? December twenty twenty four and they spend it by twenty twenty six. I don't know what else is coming down the road. How much we want to hold back. I'm all for it. I think it's a it's a logical expenditure. I think we need to do it. But I just want to consider what we've got hanging on. But I just want to consider what we've got hanging on right now and maybe coming down the road.
Scott?
Yes, well, I was gonna say, you know, besides the question, was just, you know, Taborian's approved it. So the, you know, the town wants us to do it. We can do it, and we'll save something. But it's a question of how much we're gonna be saving. It's a good use of the funds and the buys flexibility in the budget when it's a tight, you know, environment. So, I mean, this seems to be a really pretty straightforward, good idea. Thanks, Jody.
And, um, Dan has his hand up, so I believe that he's probably got the answer to Scott's question. So before I get back to you, John, let's get the answers. Dan?
Sure. For a 10-year bond at 4% interest, the estimated interest, interest savings is about $229,000.
Total?
Total, yes.
Okay.
And then, John, did you have another comment?
Well, I think we ought to do it because I think we could hang on to this money for a long time and get down to the end of 2024 and have some leftover, and then what you do. So I think, yeah, I think it's, it's a good, it's a good move.
Anita?
Um, I also support this. I mean, I was kind of going through the other ARPA funding requests and thinking through like, why would we pick this? But I think the big thing is that town meeting approved it. And so we're really just helping to move it forward. We're not making a decision that, without town's input or without what town has, that the town has said that they wanted. So I would support this too.
Yeah, I agree with you, Anita. That was sort of my thought process is the town meeting has already supported this and voted this. And now hearing that we would save an additional $229,000 in interest, that makes it even, I think that just makes it even more palatable, to be honest. So, um, any other comments or questions? John?
Can I ask a question about the sustainability coordinator?
Sure.
Okay. Now, we were supposed to be sharing that with another town, and then they, they backed off on their, their commitment. So how, how, how much have we paid? How much money do we have? Or how good is the current sustainability coordinator position? How far, how long is it funded for? Just to the end of this fiscal year?
Um, Jody? And then Eric?
Well, yeah, if Eric would like to answer, that's fine. The, the only thing I'll add is that I was asked by Christina Green why I funded the community wellness coordinator and not the sustainability. And that's because the board had actually paid more towards the community wellness coordinator. So I had to come up with less money. And secondly, if the board decides to consider, consider a pay-as-you-throw program, paying an admin fee would cover some portion of her salary too. And when that position was created, one of the things we said is that that person would be partially responsible for the pay-as-you-throw mechanics. So that, those were my reasons for not funding it. And also, I believe that, and Eric can speak to this, but I believe that Carlisle, from a 50-50 split, they would like to go to a 70-30, meaning we have her for 70%. They cover for 30. But I do think there are people in town that feel we should have her 100% of the time. So those are discussions the board would need to have too. But Eric, you can answer the rest of that if you'd like.
I know, not much more to add. Just, we had the funding for the first fiscal year, and we hired around July 1. We may have a little bit extra to get into the next fiscal year, but I would plan on for the end of this fiscal year, we're funded through. It was about $94,901.99 or so.
Um, Eric, and I'm just confused. Are we sharing with Carlisle 50-50 now? Or are we sharing with Kyle's, Carlisle 70-30?
So we're still splitting it 50-50. Sue is working half-time in Carlisle, but their town administrator feels as if there's, the workload isn't as significant over there, and she's spending more time in Westford. So that is what he proposed was the 70-30 split and what Jody and I had spoke about.
Okay, thank you. Um, John?
Well, I guess the point I was making that if we didn't want to fund the budget, could we use ARPA funds for one more year? Get a good feeling of exactly what the workload really is and where it is, and then look for funding the following fiscal year, rather than try to ram it through just this fiscal year.
Well, that's a discussion we can have when we talk about ARPA again.
That's, that's the reason. I just, you know, well, never mind.
Emily Teller has her hand up. And Emily, if you're gonna make a pitch for hiring the sustainability coordinator, we're not gonna talk about that tonight, but we will talk about it at a future meeting. But with that warning, go ahead.
You betcha, folks. That's exactly what I'm coming in to talk about. But I'm a little surprised that you're taking this, even discussing it a little bit before the agenda item at 8. Because I think a lot of people were figuring they would come in at 8 o'clock.
Well, I'm sorry about that, but sometimes we're efficient here, and it comes in. And sometimes our meetings run, you know, early, and, and we talk about things early, and...
Well, good for you. I'm thrilled about that. But, um, yes, I think I represent Westford Climate Action among other people. And I'm not gonna give you the reasons now, since you're obviously planning at another time. But I think there are many, many people in Westford who really are very adamant that this position be funded fully. And as far as Carlisle, you know, I think the workload is great for both. And I think Westford needs to take care of Westford, and Carlisle can do what they need to, to meet their needs. But I think Westford's needs are huge. So when do you think, will you decide tonight when it will be on your next agenda?
Um, I, I actually am not quite sure of Emily because we're sort of in a transition period right now with Jody leaving and our new town manager starting January 31st. So I, I just need to, you know, I need to coordinate and, and speak with both, speak with our new town manager and, and make sure she's up to speed and be, and is prepared to start talking about ARPA. So I'm not quite sure, but I will certainly give everybody ample warning.
And when is the budget discussion closed for town meeting?
Well, we're just starting on this Thursday.
Okay, good. So we have plenty of time.
Yes.
I think there are a lot of people on tonight. I don't know how many total are on this call, but I would guess that 75% would be for this discussion item. May I ask how many are on the call? Can Eric tell us that?
30.
Okay.
That's what I have, 30, counting us.
Yeah. Okay. It's counting us.
We always count you. And Jody, bless your heart for still being here. I, I'm sorry you're not in Florida. Maybe you are in Florida, but...
He is.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Good, okay, good. Thank you so much, everybody.
Thanks, Emily. Um, Jody?
Yes, I flew back. I'm in the select board meeting room just for this meeting, but...
We'll be there in a minute.
I, I want to answer, I think it was John's question. I'm a little confused now. But so if we funded the sustainability at 70%, that number would be 53,541, 53,541. If the board decides to fund it at 100%, that would be 76,500. So I just wanted to answer your question.
Okay.
One more thing, Emily. I believe this would be on February 2nd, a Select Board FinCom General Town Government Agenda. That's a joint FinCom Select Board Budget Meeting. I believe it will be discussed that night.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Emily. Um, okay, moving, I'm sorry, did we vote?
No.
I didn't think so. I was, I think, I didn't think we did. Okay, thank you. So is there a motion to support the town manager's recommendation to fund the Public Safety Radio Upgrade Project that's been approved at the June 11th Annual Town Meeting with ARPA funds?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Um, all those in favor, John?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, do we have any board reports or updates? I don't see any. Um, okay, Jody, we are at our town manager's report. And you're muted.
No, it's time lag from Florida.
You're still muted, Jody.
I'm sorry. My agenda got closed, so I was trying to find it, and I don't have it. So maybe Dan, maybe you could pull that up for me, or Eric. I'm getting my other documents open. I don't want to keep you all waiting. Actually. Oops, here we are. Thank you so much. Okay, so I have a request to approve the following contracts. CHA Consulting for Owners Project Manager Services at the Cameron Senior Center HVAC Project, the amount of $192,070. Arbor Works LLC for tree removal and maintenance-related services in the amount of $35,000, as requested by the Department of Public Works. And Grants, the Department of Fire Services for Fiscal Year '23 Student Awareness of Fire Education and Senior Safe Funding in the amount of $6,658, as requested by the Fire Department.
Is there a motion to approve?
Oh, moved.
A second? All those in favor, John?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Hi. Is there a motion to waive reading of correspondence?
So moved.
Second.
Um, all those in favor, just raise your hands. Um, and is there a motion to adjourn?
Oh, moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you, everyone. Everybody, good night. Have a good evening. Everybody in Westford, stay safe.